Everybody and welcome to the Town Hall meeting. This is episode number 19. And we're gonna talk about all Warcraft III related news, tournaments and all of that. And today I'm gonna be joined by four fantastic guests yet again. Let's go ladies first. We've got Pink Poop. How are you doing Pink Poop? And would you mind introducing yourself?
Yeah, sure. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Awesome. Hey guys, I'm Pink Poop. I'm a noob. I did my first introduction in the noob, the newbie league and that's it. Married to Ark down below.
What race do you play?
I play Night Elf.
Oof, okay.
I dabble in the Night Elves here and there and I'd like to also make a point that I played Night Elf before I met Ark, so.
She just naturally gravitates towards the weakest races.
Oh, that, we got, that's how we're gonna start. Is that how we're gonna start? You want me to like drop in a special, uh, surprise guest test notes? You want, you want me to call? Alright, Ark, let's go ahead, introduce yourself as well.
Um, I'm Ark. Um, yeah, I play for Dust Gaming as Pink Poop is wearing the shirt right there. Yeah, I just, I'm a North America, USA Night Elf player.
Who streams as well.
Who streams as well.
Um, Lado?
I'm Lado. Uh, this is my third Town Hall now. I, I was on the first two and then decided to come back and I play Night Elf and I stream and commentate occasionally as well.
Who's that little guy with you?
And this little guy is Lincoln. He is seven weeks old and he's, uh, he's, uh, in training right now.
Has he picked Night Elf yet or?
No, I won't let him play Night Elf. He has to pick a race other than Night Elf. I will not let him play Night Elf.
And then we got the legend himself, once upon a time, the best undead in the world's, the most handsome, the best singer, somebody called 911. What's going on, Jayw?
Hello, I am Mikael. I was older Lucifer, but now usually now I using Mikael. I play undead and, uh, I'm preparing a WGA team, team league in this weekend.
Does it bother you if somebody calls you Lucifer or you think because you had this nickname so many years, it's fine?
Ah, it's okay. Yeah.
Okay. Alright, uh, let's jump into our first topic. It's gonna be patch 1.32.6. And we can go on like over the main points, I guess, of it. Clap was, uh, nerfed a little bit with, uh, one second cooldown added, Stomp as well. Um, Crypt Lord was buffed, buffed a whole bunch. What are you guys' impressions on this patch? Do you think he was like pretty complete? Was there a lot of stuff that you liked and was there stuff that you think was missing that maybe you would have liked to see changed? Let's go with Pink Poop first. You, you're muted.
I think that's the biggest thing everyone complains about, which is Stomp as well as, um, Clap.
Yeah. Well, was there something that you thought was missing or?
And I actually read the notes in detail, um, so I'm not too sure, but as long as it addresses that, at least less people will start complaining, specifically Hitman and Cruncher.
Shots fired. Uh, Ark? You're muted, buddy.
I did the same thing. Um, I think the direction for the patch is kind of weird. Um, like some of the things that didn't really make sense to me was, like the first one that really jumped out at me as really strange was the level three buff to Keeper's Entangle. Like it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense at all for why they go from, um, like 600 range for level one and two and then all of a sudden, like the third level just gets a random buff. Um, but I also think that like the nerf that they did to Stomp really don't really, they don't really change anything. Like it's, it's a nerf for sure, but I think the aspects of it are kind of misguided. Um, but I do like that they made like small changes that hopefully that suggests that they're going to make, I guess, frequent fixes if they find that they didn't like the direction that they went.
Yeah.
Um, and I also find a little strange, it's, it seems like the, the race that they, they had the biggest changes for was a race that I would consider was already like one of the strongest races, which is like undead. That felt like they just gave them more options that they didn't necessarily need to have, but I guess I, I would expect to see at least some follow-up adjustments back, but for like Night Elf, I don't think it really changed a whole lot, to be honest.
Well, is there one or more things that you think should have been addressed that weren't?
I think undead fast expansion shouldn't be as easy as they are. That's, I think, I, it's probably that way in all races, but especially versus Elf. I think it's just way too easy to fast expo that, um, and it's not even so much the fast expo aspect of it. It's the fact that if you over commit to defending or fighting against a fast expo, they can just immediately choose to tech right instead and you're like so far behind.
Yeah.
That it's, it's like, you can't really, like hard commit to defending against it, I feel like. And so I think that they just have way too many options that are too, uh, unpunishable. Personally, but.
Um, yeah, I mean, the, the changes overall, I like them. They're very small and I think the large majority of these changes are, it almost reminds me of like a Dota patch where there's just so many changes, but like they, they change it so minimally that it's not actually gonna change the game. Um, that being said, I like the direction it's going. Like it's obvious that they were actually listening to the community because a lot of the things that the community were complaining about were nerfed. It's just in like, kind of, kind of like what Ark was saying, it's just not enough. Like the, the Stomp from seven to six seconds, it's like, okay, there's, you know, there's, there's other ways to nerf it and then same thing with Clap. Um, the bear buff, we got one damage, you know, it's, I kind of became a meme by, by saying bears plus two damage, but it's only plus one damage on the min side. They didn't even add plus one to the max damage. So it's effectively only plus point five damage, which is again, just so minimal that it's barely, you know, it's, it's not gonna change anything. Um, the, the one buff that's obvious that people have kind of been talking about is like, like the one change that will change the game is the Crypt Lord buff. The Crypt Lord buff is like kind of crazy. It's almost like a rework of the hero. I don't wanna call it a rework, but it's, um, the changes were significant and kind of, again, like Ark was saying, it's gonna open up new options for undead and we've already been seeing it and I, I kind of like it actually. It breathes some uh, fresh air into the game. Like we're seeing undeads going fast expo against human with Crypt Lord and I've been seeing it on ladder even against Elf. It doesn't, it doesn't work. It's not gonna work against Elf. I don't think it's gonna change.
Yeah, that's why you like it.
Yeah, it's not gonna change the, the matchup against Elf at all. Cause there's no way. It's still completely unviable against Elf, but against the other races, I think we're gonna see some Crypt Lord or at least we're gonna see people experiment with it, which I think is fun.
Jayw?
Okay, maybe Crypt, Crypt Lord, uh, papa is, uh, very huge, but, but the other thing is I think a change is very small. Maybe some, uh, Night Elf needed some change, maybe Keeper or some things still. And, uh, how about, uh, balance, uh, patchy, the, uh, step? Sanctuary step and, uh, previous station step. But I think for undead dispatch is, uh, very nice. That's all.
Uh, what about Clap and Stomp?
Hmm, not bad. Yeah.
You think it's enough or no?
Maybe little more nope, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Am I the only optimist here? Sorry. I feel like the changes are, uh, I feel like they made changes. I feel like everyone's saying this is not enough.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's, sorry, go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, it's, I feel like it's gonna be hard for everybody to be happy, to be honest. Like there is no patch that's gonna come out where everybody's gonna be like, yeah, that's, that's the one right there. Like that's the perfect patch, but, uh, they at least, they addressed a lot of good things for sure. Like, you know, then we, uh, they nerfed a little bit, the hit points of Roll of Necromancy, for example. Uh, the pendant, they added the pendant at the last second. I wasn't even in there initially. I think that's like one of the best things about that and Greater Mana. Like these are huge. Like I would put these two in terms of priority to be immediately behind Clap and Stomp. But when you look at Clap and Stomp, it really doesn't feel like it's enough. Maybe, uh, those nerf of like one second extra, you know, six to seven second, like no nerf on the, the damage or the cap. And yeah, just buffing the Crypt Lord a lot, even though undead was already doing good is kind of nuts for me. Like it was already the worst matchup for human. Now it's even worse. Now we're losing to this big guy like. Yeah.
Um, yes, I, I meant to say that the, actually, yeah, two of the best nerfs here are Greater Mana Potion and Pendant of Energy. Those were two of like the biggest game changing items and then nerfing them was, I think, just community wide, everyone is like, yes, that was needed and it's good. The other thing I wanted to mention was the, this is kind of inconsequential, but the, the transportation ship, they, them changing it to, to work like a zeppelin. Now, I don't know if it's coincidence or not, but I was commentating a game with Taker on the 2v2 map where, where that ship is available. And I was talking about it during that commentating and these changes that they made were exactly word for word, the changes that I recommended while I was doing that comment, while I was doing that casting. Now, I'm not saying.
So you, you didn't just popularize Beastmaster Hunts, you also directly.
I, well, I made a joke. I was like Blizzard, I, I go Blizzard, if you're listening, these are the changes that should be made to the ship. And then this, these patch notes came out and I'm like, was, was Pete Stillwell and Matt Morris, were they secretly watching Tower Taker's?
Now, now we all understand. No, now we just understand how Reforged came to be.
Oh my god. Uh, I, I like this change actually for the boats. Like we had been talking about it as well. There was a vile reef in the 2v2 tournaments previously and I did think they had potential, you know, it could end up being a dumpster fire and then we were gonna have to like get it out of the way, but I think it's cool to experiment a little bit and maybe to add that, uh, in the game eventually. But yeah, like a big rework on like some of the high tier attempts and stuff. Also, I like that, but I do hope that Blizzard is gonna keep in touch with, you know, the best players out there of each race and try to also balance the game around them. Cause when I look at these Crypt Lord changes, I'm like, there is no freaking way. They speed dialed happy in 120 and these guys were like, you know what undeads really need right now? It's a big buff for the Crypt Lord so that we can go for this hero first against human and just fucking crush everyone. It's like, nobody really understands what exactly happened there, but it happened. So, yeah. Uh, anything else to add or you guys wanna move on into next topic? No? Alright. Let's do it then, uh.
One thing I'll say that I really enjoy when I look at these patch notes is that they have developer notes and I think that goes to show that at least Blizzard is putting thoughts into it as well as listening to the community and they're just not inputting things and spitting things out.
Yeah, that's actually a really good point, cause I don't, I don't recall ever really seeing developer notes before in previous Warcraft III patches. Um, so it's kind of interesting to see them actually giving their, their, uh, input on it.
It's kind of become a thing across multiple games when like nowadays when they patch, they kind of explain like why they're thinking they should go this way and stuff, which in Warcraft III is risky. Because as soon as you say that, you're like, you're going to people like, oh my god, I can't believe you said that and stuff, but.
Yeah.
Alright, let's move on then. Next topic is gonna be the whole GLHF and GG debacle. And I guess it's just like a very broad topic about like all like sorts of like mannerisms and stuff. Do you guys think it's very important to say GLHF? Do you think it's important to say GG? Is it sportsmanship? Like tell me everything that you think about that. Pink Poop?
Uh, so, okay. This is coming from someone who is learning how to play and the person who's teaching me is Ark and he's instilling into me to always say, good luck, have fun and good game, always. Cause he says that's the best mannerisms to show someone regardless of whether or not they say it to you. I agree. I think it's kind of, I don't understand the perspective of someone. I think someone in your previous Town Hall said, it throws them off. I don't understand that perspective. I think it's just really good mannerism. I also think once you understand the way someone plays, when they say, when they don't say it, I do think it implies something. I don't know. I.
You mean they usually say it and then this one time they don't?
Yeah, and they don't and they're like, oh my god, it's implying something. Um, I think just in general, you should say it.
Ark? I guess we, she could have spoiled it.
Uh, I guess the one, one thing I'll say is that, um, I generally don't say GLHF in the game. Uh, like I'll, like if we're, we're doing like a, a league match or something, like I'll say it before the game starts.
Oh, I, I think you're speaking in both Discord and, uh, you need to stay muted in the web, I, cause there is an echo.
Oh, oh, okay.
No, we don't hear you now. You, you should be unmuted in Discord.
Oh, unmuted in Discord? Okay. Let me switch over.
Even Lincoln knows how to use this.
Sorry, I, I don't know why, why I just all of a sudden messed up, but, um, like I'll generally not say GLHF in the game itself unless someone says it to me first and then I'll just, I just do it to respond. But, um, I try to like not talk very much in the game itself, cause I'm trying to just like focus on it and everything. Um, but yeah, I guess I always, I always try to, no matter what, no matter how pissed off I am at like what happened in the game or like if I lost it stupidly or something, like I always try to say GG and just leave just because like that way it at least shows that like I accept that the game is lost and everything and I don't know, but especially with, uh, it's kind of important nowadays also with the, with the introduction of like all the desyncs and stuff too. Cause like sometimes you don't even really know if the opponent kind of accepted that they, that they think the game is over. Um, which.
What do you mean?
Well, like if you're just like, if you're in a bad position or something and then all of a sudden you just leave the game, uh, like you could be, you could, it could have been a desync or it could have just been that they thought they were too far behind to, to play the game. I don't know. I'm just throwing that one at the last second. But I think it's just, um, I don't know. It's just what I always try to do is just say GG and leave. I think it, uh, it says a little bit um, more like what Pink Poop was saying of if someone, like I don't get the whole idea of if you say it sometimes, then other times you don't like because of the player or something like, you're either gonna just say it all the time or you just, just don't. To me, like it, it doesn't really mean anything to me if someone doesn't say it, but.
So you, you're not offended if somebody doesn't GLHF and GG?
I don't really care if someone doesn't say GLHF to me at the start of the game, just cause I don't really care about that part. Um, but if someone says GG normally or something, I would take notice of it if they didn't say it. But otherwise I, I don't really think much of it.
Yeah. Lado, have we talked about this before?
I don't think so. Uh, but I, I kind of agree with pretty much everything that Ark said. I think more importantly than not saying GG or GLHF or whatever is just not bad-mannering your opponent. Like whether it's in ladder or a cup or a league, like not saying ridiculous and hateful things. I think that's way more important than not saying GG or not saying GLHF. It's, it's bizarre that this game is, the majority of the players that play this game are now like 30 years or older and sometimes you still meet people on ladder that like wish cancer amongst your family and it's like, what? Really?
That's awful.
Yeah, so, um.
We chuckle, cause we know who you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I mean, there's not many, to be honest, the, the large majority of the people that play this game are really good mannered and for the most part, I have like a positive experience when I'm playing online. And I, I don't care if you say GLHF or GG, whether it's tournament, league, cup, ladder, uh, custom game, I really don't care, but I think more important is just not, not being an asshole.
Do you GG every time or is the occasional?
Most, if I'm like super duper salty about a loss, I'll just hit alt QQ, but again, like I don't, I, I don't mean any offense to my opponent and I don't think they should take any offense.
Uh, what about you, Jayw?
Hmm, about that, uh, when I was young, uh, I practiced with a short time. Then I win the maybe five straight games. Uh, then in the start I typed GG. Then he yelling me, you already won game or what? After that, then after that, I have a habit and only say in the GL in the chat when I was young. But, you know, but, uh, in the tournament, operating tournament, you, I think most say, uh, GG if you lose a game. But in the online match or something, so, but I don't care about that. It was okay. Yeah.
So yeah, if somebody doesn't say, uh, GG in the end of game, do you care or?
I don't care.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I will say that, uh, offensive GGing, I think is, is one of the most BM thing ever, which is like, uh, I, I like watching Artosis's stream a lot, like when he plays Starcraft and, uh, and I, just like a few weeks ago, someone did that to him and he was going off on like a really long rant. And like, I always think about that whenever I see someone like offensive GG, cause I know like every time I watch him and something like that happens to him, he always goes off on a huge rant for it.
Is that one of the worst things you think that somebody could do? I, I use someone like, cause you say GG, but are you like emotional? When you lose, like where even like if you're like really badly emotional and you're tilted, you still find the strength to say GG?
Oh yeah. Uh, I, I try to always say GG, just. Uh, but.
GG, it's like.
Um, but like I do really hate it when someone offensive GG's me. Like it, it, that's probably the one thing that, uh, someone could BM me and, and it would like really bother me.
Yeah. Well, didn't you have like an argument or something with like Rustpot or something before and then you played him in the league? And I remember listening to the cast and they were like, oh, Ark, for sure. He's not gonna say GG and he's gonna top trash and stuff. And then you, you just GG'd it out. They were like, what? Really? And stuff? So yeah, I, I can attest that you were telling the truth about always GGing.
I think one thing that Lado really hit on is most of us are almost 30 if not. And we still encounter so many people who are bad mannered. And I think it's just something to put in perspective during games, like we're almost all 30. Why would we wish this upon other people?
Yeah. Um, what about like just general manners in general, like, like you said, like, you know, Lado, like don't be an asshole or something, but do you have some example of things that maybe like bothered you other than like somebody just like, you know, wishing cancer or whatever, like, you know, we know the guy in question?
I mean, I, I think it's been going down recently, but in general, like two of the more common offenses that you heard in the past were either cancer or rape. And it's like, those are probably two of the worst possible things you can think of. And if you have anyone close to you at all who has been victim to either cancer or rape, like what is, what's wrong with you? That you would actually, I mean, even saying that is such a like, that's like the kind of thing, like I wouldn't wish it upon my enemy kind of thing.
Yeah.
And there's still people out there that wish it upon their enemy. Like what's, what's wrong with you? There's, there's some weird people. Those, those are the two, those are the two main things that actually get under my skin is, is when people stoop to that level that they, they're like, you know, either I'm gonna rape you or I hope you get cancer. It's like, what? Wrong with you?
Hope you get cancer.
It's like they put their 16-year-old mindset back in when they play Warcraft. I don't, I see that a lot where people say stupid shit and you're just like, what?
And I, I, when that happens, I try to put myself in their shoes and I'm like, what could possibly be going on in their head that they were compelled to say something so hateful? And the only thing that I can imagine is that they have like a really terrible life and they're taking out their anger and frustrations on a video game. So the way that I justify it as the player on the receiving end of that is like, if them taking out their frustration on me stops them from doing something really stupid in their real life, then I guess I'm okay with it because I'll take their frustration and five minutes later I'll forget about it and it'll be fine. Whereas, you know, if they do something actually bad in real life, that will have a long lasting effect on their real life. So if that's the way that someone takes out their hatred and doesn't know how to deal with their emotions and they're like, okay, I'm gonna play a video game and just really trash talk some people. Like that's how I, that's how I get my anger out instead of going to counseling and therapy. I guess, like that's, that's actually how I justify, like when I hear someone say that, I'm like, oh, this person has some serious deeply rooted emotional issues and they use video games to take it out. Okay.
Yeah, Lado, you're known as a pretty chilled guy that gets along with pretty much everybody, but recently I saw another side of you. You didn't seem to be a very big fan of Ena for some reason. So like, what's happened there exactly? Like what did you do? That was so bad that like now if you see his name, like you, you feel like you have to tell him what you think of him or something?
He's, he's one of the people in the community that, that talk about raping people and I just, I, like I told you, it gets under my skin. I don't, I don't get it. I don't understand what, how you can say that. I, I, I just don't like, I, I, I know someone close to me who's been raped and it's like, when, when he says that, I'm like, he really, you know, do you act, do you, do you actually mean that? Um, what is, what?
It's the same with cancer. I think like the people that don't, that do that, for sure, they've never had anybody close to them like have that, or they would understand like the true meaning of the words and what it means. So they probably would never say it. It's like pretty traumatic to know somebody that has this terrible thing. But yet like so, some people just use it to vent. I don't know. Uh, okay. Yeah, so, sorry, did I interrupt someone? No?
Oh, I said, or they're just not aware.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, I think part of, uh, part of it is probably the fact that, you know, everything's online. There is almost no repercussions. So if you say something stupid, you pretty much can get away with it unless like you're, you know, you're like a streamer or somebody that's like known and stuff, you know? If you're just like a random person online, it seems like you can say a lot without really being punished for it. Like maybe you'll get a ban in a channel or something like, you know, big deal, right? You're not gonna get sued. You don't risk like any fine or jail time, so. There is definitely a lot of people that take a lot of liberties because of that, I would say for sure. Okay, what is up next? Let's talk about cups and tournaments that are happening. And up first we have the W3IL, Warcraft III Info League. It's a team league and the current season just concluded. So we're heading into the playoffs. Four teams advance. And it looks like Umad finished first, Dust Gaming second, Oceanus third, and I think this is actually wrong. I believe Sui, Soviet Warlets finished fourth. I don't know why on the, on Wikipedia it shows the right team, but for some reason on the W3IL website, it shows CSC fourth. And I don't think they announced the bracket, did they?
It's, uh, Umad versus Sui, uh, Sui and, uh, Oceanic or Oceanus versus Dust.
Yeah, so it makes sense that it would be 1-4 versus 2-3, about two, yeah, 2 versus 3. So you play for Team Dust, uh, Ark. How, how do you feel about facing Oceanus?
Uh, well, the, the likelihood of me actually playing is, is not very high, but I, uh, during the, the season, I mean, we, we pretty much beat every team. Well, we did beat every team. So I think Oceanus is the team that we had the closest match versus. Um, I don't know if point wise if that lines up, but I know that it was really a nail biter. What, what was that?
It was 10-5 in points and like you guys won four series out of five.
Yeah, but that could be very close. Um, I mean, Longwall could have swung to shocker. He kind of always has, oh wait. Oh, I had the team wrong. Oh, okay, okay, okay. My bad, guys. My bad. Okay, I was thinking of a different team. Um, yeah, no, we're gonna stomp them. Sorry.
And to give context, it was a 5-10. Two of those was an FF because the twos didn't play.
Wait, what?
Yeah, the twos didn't actually play. It was, they, uh, Neutron couldn't, uh, play for some reason or something.
Oh, so it was a death win?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nonetheless, a win for Dust, but just to put things in perspective.
Yeah, yeah. Strong showing for Dust actually. So far, but yeah, it's all about those playoffs and I guess Team, um, Team Sui, I don't even know what to call them, Sui, Soviet Warlet, they've, uh, they've barely made it through. And, uh, I think Umad should be favored against them. I don't know between Dust and Oceanus. Like it feels like, you know, if there was a death win in the first match, cause I rate Oceanus pretty high. I think they have a lot of good players. So I think it's maybe gonna be really close personally, but it's exciting stuff. Do, do you know when it's happening, Ark?
It should be not this weekend, but the next weekend, I believe.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so in two weekend, two weekends from now.
Lado, have you been following this? NA all the way or?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm rooting for Dust, of course. NA, NA number one, but, um, I haven't been watching all the games. I, I kind of, I'll catch them if I can, but I don't have a ton of time recently. So, um, I do look at the results and yeah, I do. yeah, I did, man. NA number one, go Dust. It's looking good.
Yeah. Jaywuk, do you ever follow this team league?
Me?
Yeah.
No, after MTW disband, I didn't watching Adobe ILO, so.
You know, you know that some Korean players join some teams, right?
Really?
Yeah, you, I think your brother is in this and like a Soin.
Maybe no.
Yeah, actually in Division Two, looks like Zero Effort took first place. And I think Remind might be playing with them as well sometimes. We got Sparks finishing second. And Team Fra took thirds. I don't, I'm not actually sure. I think it's one team moving up automatically. So Zero Effort goes up and I think it was Raptor Gaming that goes down to Division Two.
I think there's a, I don't know if they do, I think they do like a tournament or something to decide who goes, who goes up, because I know that there's a Division Three team that depending on.
There's sign.
Yeah, and Thunder. He went against Free Fire, what the, how did you know?
There's actually some drama around this match.
I know, there was, uh, Trixie was on the last town and he talked about it a little bit.
Okay.
But yeah, interesting stuff and excited to see who goes up and down in those divisions and for next season as well. But yeah, the, it's still ongoing. Season three and I guess stay tuned to figure out exactly when the playoffs are gonna be. Hopefully we'll get some casters in there, maybe Back to Warcraft. We'll wanna cast some and yeah, very nice tournament. Uh, the ESL Open Cup number nineteen, so that was just, is that the one that just took place?
Yeah.
Yeah. So Foggy takes the win. Happy was playing human. He made it to the semifinals. He had a pretty sick series against Hawk, actually, but Foggy finally wins his first uh, Open Cup and that was through defeating mostly Blade and, and then Hawk in the finals. Would, it's not really surprising, right? Like usually Happy wins every time, but he's playing undead and then now that he's not, it seems like he was the Foggy show who always make the finals usually and doesn't really lose to anybody else, so. Seems like Night Elf is doing well in that regard, Lado, aren't they?
Foggy's just too good.
Foggy is next level, man.
Uh, Pink Poop, do you follow the Open Cups?
I don't follow ESL. It's a little too early for me.
Yeah. Jaywuk, do you ever follow? Sorry.
Not this one.
Nope.
What were you, what were gonna say?
I was gonna say, I hadn't, um, really seen these games, uh, yet, um, but just like all the Hawk games and Blade games in, in the ESL Cups in the past, like Foggy is just so strong versus human right now, I feel.
Do you study his games?
Oh, yeah, I, I watch, mostly I watch his VODs, um, because I can, I can do that while working, so I, so like, uh, most of the games that I watched during the week are really just Foggy VODs, so. Um, and then, uh, yeah, so I haven't caught these because he doesn't stream his, um, his tournaments, but, um, I'll be watching them probably some point later this week or on the weekend. Um, but yeah, I, I've been trying to, like Foggy's been, is one of the players I've been trying to watch the most for versus human. Um, and so for any elves out there, I would definitely highly recommend him as a person to learn from. Him and Lilith, I think are, I feel like are the two, two best to, to learn from right now.
Isn't it super important to watch replays, you think?
Oh, yeah. Like, I know we had this actually, uh, while you were streaming, we had like kind of, uh, like a very elongated conversation throughout the span of like three games, I think of your play, um, but like, I think uh, watching replays is so important that a lot of players don't really, um, put as much emphasis on that, I think is a definitely a very important skill to, I guess, practice if you wanna get better.
And do you know where to get the good replays?
Uh, Warcraft3.info, Todd's, Todd's replay server as well.
I would say number one is probably being a Back to Warcraft sub because they post the replays of everything they cast. That's not without a clean fin, obviously, to on their Discord. So for example, all of these Open Cups, if you're a Night Elf and you're not a Back to Warcraft sub, what the fuck are you doing? Because then you will get all of these games and then you can study them and use the same creep routes and like same build orders and everything, so. It's so weird to me that I don't see as many people doing that that I think should. Maybe they think of like studying replays as like a boring thing, but the thing is, it's gonna make your game so much better to actually do it. So it really surprises me that it's, it seems so few people actually do that properly.
I, I can actually chime in. I used to watch a lot of replays and now that I have less time, basically anytime I do have to play, I just wanna spend it playing rather than watching replays. That's, that, that, that's, that's my argument is just having, is a matter of time. But yeah, I, I agree. It is important. It's important to watch replays if you wanna get better.
Yeah, watching replays is a little bit hard, especially as a new player, because you don't know what you're looking for other than the build. Small nuances, like if I have Ark behind my shoulder watching, I don't, there are small nuances I don't pick up that he might pick up, that he'll mention, and I will never cash that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a lot about just like writing down the entire build order, like what to prioritize and the creep route, build order and creep route. That's the main thing that you need. And then you get the gist, like the general idea of the builds or like what the player is trying to achieve. And then I think even if you don't fully understand it, just trying to do it and making your own experience with it is also gonna be super important. And also. Uh, I made some tutorials recently. I haven't made any for Night Elf yet. I will probably soon. But I actually write down the build order, yeah, like when you have to make everything and it helps people so much. They, I think most of the people that have watched my tutorial, they love them because they, then they have, they take the same notes or they take like different notes in their own language or with their own characters that they want. And then they can just like recreate the build order as close to as possible to how the pro made it. And that's how I learned the rifle palabill from Thorsane, for example. I just wrote down everything that he was doing. And then it's like a long, a long thing where like you need to make sure you don't forget anything. If you forget one thing, then the build's different. Because everything he's doing makes like so much chance when you learn the build. I think it's the best way to learn build orders and creep routes. And then play well with it. And also stop listening to Ark telling you to write GLHF GG, because that's a waste of goddamn time.
Well, I'm just glad that she can't make fun of me. Yeah, I'm just glad she can't make fun of me anymore for writing stuff down in a notebook.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, i- if you have like superhuman memory, it's, I think it's okay to do it without, but I, I, I'm so convinced, I, I have a really bad memory personally. If I don't write something, like I use Google Calendar for everything. Low key, like I will forget literally anything that's not on my Google Calendar. Down to any small appointments, sometimes like a lunch with someone, so I need to make sure I write everything on it. Like for streams, for tournaments, coaching. And it's the same for like tutorials. I don't think I will remember a build nearly as well. Unless I wrote it down. It's the same for students, I think. That's why they take a lot of notes. They study with books and everything.
Yeah, for sure.
Unless you're like really gifted, but I'm not. Okay. The ESL Meister Shaft, which continues.
There is a mass, sorry, there's a massive thunderstorm here and my lights are flickering. If my power goes out, I might get axed, just.
Okay.
I'm just letting you guys know.
We hope you'll be fine, Lotto. Be safe out there. Yeah, the ESL Meister Shaft, that's, I think it was Playday Three, that was yesterday and today. And in Group A, Longwall been drunken, Spiral beat Mago, and then I got Creep Lorded by One. Great experience. And in the other group, actually, it's not up to date, but I think Anti bit spooky, Exlord bit Joker, and I don't know actually who won between Toxy and Edo, but yeah. It's still ongoing. It seems like a lot of the favorites are winning except me because of Creep Lord, but it's a fun tournament. I kinda like that you play everybody twice. I think it makes it a little bit more interesting.
This is the tournament, tournament that is casted in German, right?
Yeah, yeah, and with Reforged graphics. They're, they're really testing people's passion with this one.
Oh, yeah.
Get behind the German, I can't get behind the Reforged graphics.
Yeah. Yeah, actually it is, I mean, kinda, I, I, they put some effort into it though, Back to Warcraft, right? They, I think they used the an altered version that's like easier to watch. So it for sure looks a little bit better than usual Reforged graphics, but I think if for anybody that has played for a long time with classic, like it's just so hard to watch anything in Reforged graphics or to even play it, like, and I don't see that ever changing. Like, do you guys think maybe someday it's gonna happen or?
Uh, I've almost given up entirely off Reforged graphics, like it, there's so many instances where I've been watching a game and I'm just like, oh, wow, this is going really good for Player X. And then all of a sudden, like Player Y just wins the game, like Player X says GG and leaves. And I'm just so confused because I, like, I don't even understand what armies are fighting against each other.
Yeah, it's hard to follow.
Jaywuk, do you ever watch these tournaments? There is a lot of fun there.
No.
Are, are you a regular viewer on Back to Warcraft?
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, why you don't watch my matches? I thought we were bros.
You lost to Crypturus?
Yeah.
Best thing spent or what?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
And wait, that's not the only match that I played against Cryptlord. We're going through a lot of tournaments, just wait. There is way more, there is way worse than this, than these games. But yeah, it's going on still every Tuesday and Wednesday on Back to Warcraft, starting at seven PM, uh, each time, so. On Tuesdays is Group A and on Wednesdays is Group B.
I saw, oh, that was kind of their biggest complaint on Twitter as well as in chat is that it's casted in German.
Yeah, but I mean, there is not much we can do about this, like it's a German tournament, like in the, once upon a time. There would have been a German cast and maybe an English, English cast as well, but with the way the scene is now, it's a German product. Right? It's the Meister Shaft. It's supposed to be like the somewhat German championship. So I understand that they would want a German broadcast for it and they went to Back to Warcraft, meaning that then we don't get an English broadcast. But, uh, yeah, like not much we can do about it.
My, my main thing, I actually, I don't care about the German, the, with the Reforged graphics, it's so much like you have to really concentrate when you're watching it. And this is coming from someone who's played this game forever. You, you have to like really concentrate and think about like what you're watching in order to make any sense of what's happening on the screen. Whereas, you know, when, when you're watching a, a game in classic graphics, it's one of those things, you could kind of just like, you don't even have to pay attention a hundred percent. You can just kind of like glance, glance at the screen, go wash some dishes, you know, clean up your kitchen, glance back, you get an idea of like where they were and you can kind of figure out what's happening. With the Reforged graphics, it's like, it's really hard. Like you have to like pay attention and it's like mentally taxing just to figure out what's happening in the game. So, yeah, the Reforged graphics are hard, man. They're not.
Is it because we are just so used to the old graphics and if a new person were to look at it, they quickly can comprehend it? Kind of teaching an, an old dog new tricks?
I, I think that and also the new graphics are like very different. Some of the stuff, some of the way like some of the units and heroes and stuff looks like just seems so different. That I'm actually like, is that, like, I don't even recognize some of the units.
Yeah, the portraits are really hard to recognize, I, I feel.
Yeah, that also.
I, I draw a lot of comparisons between, um, chess and Warcraft a lot. And it's like with a chess game, like at, at a high level of chess, you can just kind of glance at a board and you can figure out how they got to that position, like whether or not you saw the first twenty moves. If you look at a board that's twenty moves in, you can figure out how they got to that position. It's kind of the same idea with Warcraft, like you can, or at least for me, it's like you, you look at the game, you can like see the hero levels, the items, the army that they have, and you can kind of figure out how they got to that point. Whereas with Reforged, I can't do that. Like, it's like you, you have to like sit there and watch the whole, the whole thing, so. Jaywuk, your dog is adorable, buddy.
Thank you. Link on his past.
Damn, everybody's got pets, children, like where is mine? I need a teddy bear or something, anything. So the France versus the World Open Qualifier. So there is two French qualifiers for this. The first one took place last week and I was actually able to win that in finals versus side against five Creep Lord games. It was a three-two victory, in which I lost quite a few brain cells, but yeah. And I think three players actually qualified, but yeah, only won one money in it. And then to, tonight, actually just tonight, the Open Qualifier concluded and it looks like Blade, Sonic and TGW were able to make it through. I didn't get to follow that at all, but it's nice to see Blade play well. And, uh, yeah, Sonic takes second place, TGW third place, sadly for please, didn't quite make the cuts. And there is another, there is gonna be another French qualifier coming up. It's gonna be on the seventeenth. What is the seventeenth? Next Wednesday, so next week. That's gonna be, if you're a French player and want to play in this, again, fifty euro for first place, top three qualifies for the actual main event. And the main event is gonna have some invited players and some revived players, so. I'm not sure I can elaborate entirely on everything, but yeah, it's gonna be a sixteen players tournament taking place at the end of the month from twenty second to twenty six. There is gonna be three hundred fifty euros, AKA three hundred ninety-five dollars up for grabs. And, uh, yeah, it's a lot of fun, this tournament, and cast on Fra TV on Twitch. So twitch.tv slash FraTV1. I assume you guys didn't catch any of it, so I don't really.
I watched the, I watched just on your stream, um, like your finals.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, other than the finals, I didn't really catch any games. It was pretty funny though. I think, I think I started tuning in right when you said something like, he's doing the same build order five times in a row.
Sounds like me, yeah. He did, he did do the same build five times.
Yeah, yeah.
The CC Master Cup Three, so that's a tournament that hasn't started yet, but that's coming up. It's starting tomorrow. It's gonna be cast on Back to Warcraft, one PM CST. So it, pretty much twelve hours, twelve hours and thirteen minutes. And we got quite a few big names. Moon is it, like, who made these seedings anyway? Like, look at all these names at the top, like there is a bunch of people I've never heard of. And then you got one twenty versus Moon in round one. This is like the most cuff seedings I've ever seen. And then all the human are at the bottom in the same bracket. They fly against PCG. This is crazy.
Is this invite only?
Were they, were these randomized or?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
It, it, it must have been randomized. Is it, it, at the least, they always have seed one at the very top and seed two at the very bottom. And that's obviously not the case, because I don't know who's the thing, whoever that person is at the top. I don't know who that is.
Yeah, four thousand dollars plus on the line as well. Jaywuk, weren't you in this?
I don't know, no idea.
Is it invite or?
Yeah, yeah, it's a invite tournament, yeah.
I should have invited you instead of Z, Z, Zha.
Hey, he's a good player.
Is he?
Yeah, you know it.
I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, if he's in this.
Are you trolling or?
No, I'm being serious. I, I don't know. I don't mean any offense, I, I, to be honest.
I see his replays. I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't consider him a bad player by any means. Of course, he's in this, like Lotto said, but.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because it says that Icehark replaced Yumiko, so. I wonder if. Yeah, I don't know.
It looks like the entire round one is gonna be simultaneous tomorrow. Uh, never mind, every match takes one PM, so I don't know actually. But yeah, Back to Warcraft should be casting that tomorrow and, uh, yeah. It's nice to get some, wait, I'm guessing it's gonna be non-Reforged graphics, right? I feel like every tournament should have that listed somewhere.
Well, it's on that ease. I don't think, um, Back to Warcraft can stream Reforged graphics on that ease.
Yeah, yeah. It should be, should be a regular graphics. All right. What do we have next? The Warcraft Team Gold League twenty twenty summer season. We already talked about it a whole bunch, but now we know who's playing who in the playoffs. So after the regular season, Team ELL Rogue Warriors, LP Club and Rise Again took the top four spots. ELL and Rogue Warriors were very dominant, so I think they're gonna be the favorites to go into the finals, but ELL in the semifinals, so that's one twenty Lin Lolites face Rise Again, which is Jaywuk right there, Thunder and Moon. How about this matchup, Jaywuk? You're gonna smash them, right?
No, ELL is very strong team. Also, Lin's strong, Eiling's strong, Lola also strong, but I think we have a chance to win to two, two on two and Moon won or I win, then we can go to, uh, win the finals.
Did you guys, did you focus a lot on the, on the two on two for practice before this?
Yeah, yeah.
And how would you rate you guys in terms of two on two?
We can combine, uh, Orc, uh, Human Night Elf under the Night Elf and, uh, under the Human. Three combined.
Do you think you guys, like, uh, your two on two duo are like some of the absolute best in the world?
No, I don't think so.
And, uh, like when you started to play this tournament, what was your goal? Because like it started from everybody had to qualify and then there was the regular season. So you, did you just take it match by match or when you signed up, you were like, let's go top three, top two or something?
We are talking about, uh, just, uh, uh, joined the qualifier. Then after that, we won, we lost to ELL and the LP Club. Then we just think about joining the, just the top ball. And we did it. Now we want to go get champions if we can possible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How's the delay from Korea if you compare with the ping from China on, on Netties?
In the Netties, uh, for Korean, maybe 60 and 70 MS. Not too high, so it was okay. Yeah.
And do you know, like when you were in China and you practiced on Netties, what was your ping there?
Netties?
Yeah.
Uh, maybe all on the 4T.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do you have a preference between LP Club and Rogue Warriors or if you, if you beat ELL?
LP has a strong two on two team and good players. I think, uh, uh, LP might win the Rogue Warriors. But Impian, yeah, yeah. But Impian and TH are so strong, but I think LP can win. Yeah.
Well, you guys could have had more players than three. Did you just have three players cuz you want the most prize money possible?
No, no, no. Uh, first when, uh, they announced that match, I, I want to remind to join our team.
Yeah.
And, uh, I asked Moon, uh, you want to play, but he said, uh, he needed to think about, uh, to join the match. So when the last day to send the email to organize, Moon said, uh, okay. But remind, uh, join the Yumiko's team because he's, uh, streaming in the Huya. And the Yumiko and remind the team is, uh, all, uh, is, uh, streaming in the Huya. So they gonna, remind to go play with the Yumiko. And, uh, after, after, uh, joined the top ball, we won the YR team. Remind the play me about, uh, Yumiko and Upaze. Yeah.
How was the team spirit actually during these matches? You guys are like, are like in really high spirits. Like I guess you use a audio program for talking during game?
Yeah, yeah.
And like, how was team spirit? You guys getting pumped during the matches? You shouting everything? Moon's losing his mind popping the champagne or what?
No, very quietly. Yeah.
Yeah?
Not too high.
Yeah. Alright, sounds good. Good luck to you guys actually.
Yeah, thank you.
You guys want to add anything about this tournament? I guess most of you have been following, no?
Good luck to, uh, Luis or, uh, Michael.
You guys have that?
Yeah, there's gonna be some fun matches. I like your outlook, Bruce, for like, like how do you come out winning the match? Like you have to look at it literally like match by match. So I like, I think you, you, you have a good attitude towards it.
Uh, the Warcraft Gold League 2020 Summer Season May Pro Qualifier that just concluded. And well, actually that was I guess at the end of last month. And we might have already have talked about it, but it was Lolite versus Moon in the finals, but because of all that happened and the point system and everything, there was a decider recently. Because TH Fly and Fortitude had the same amount of points at the end of Netties qualifiers. And they had to play a tiebreaker. So they did just that. And in the first round of tiebreakers, those were best of threes. TH beat Fly 2-0 with Human versus Orc. TH played Orc versus Fortitude's Human and lost 0-2. And then Fortitude's Human lost 0-2 to Fly's Orc. So we went for another rounds and this time TH, it was best of one this time. TH beat Fly in Human versus Orc. And he beat Fortitude in Undead versus Human. Jaywuk, why, why is TH picking Undead versus Human? This is weird.
I don't know. I can't understand TH's mind.
No idea, no idea at all?
Yeah, yeah, but he won. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
He qualified. Yeah.
Well, yeah, congrats to TH. He makes it. Uh, did you guys catch any of this?
I didn't watch the decider.
Yeah.
I didn't either.
It was cast, I think on Back to Warcraft. It was fun. A little bit of weird moves, like some games were kind of underwhelming, I think, performance wise, but fun overall.
It's hard. These Asian tournaments are usually casted at like, you know, 4, 5 AM in the morning.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, the Zero Effort League number one. So we talked quite a bit in the Australian Tunnel last week about this one, but yeah, it's a tournament where all of these guys were invited, the players from Zero Effort, Seso, Seron, Raven Drainer, Physics, Moon Glades. And they built up quite a big prize pool. Actually, a lot of people donated. There was $700 in total. And it was basically a 16 players double bracket tournament. Ark, you weren't there. What happened, man?
Um, so in the, excuse me, top bracket, my first, uh, match was versus So and, um, he took that series 2-1. Um, so in, uh, in each one of these events, like the, the two qualifiers, I played it and in this, I lose in the first round. And had to make my way through the loser's bracket. But, uh, in this case, Deuce was the one to finish me off during, or at the end of the night. But the games were pretty good overall. I'd say that, um, I think, uh, I didn't catch Hunter's, uh, games on day one. Um, so I didn't see him play up against, uh, uh, Insign, Raven or, uh, Insub. But on day two, he was certainly playing very strongly. Um, kind of just dominated, uh, Duck and, uh, did pretty well against Insub in the finals. Um, but ultimately Insub was able to take the win, but uh, I thought it was a pretty fun event. I, like, it's, it's nice to have events that are geared towards NA and, um, by NA, I mean like all the, the entire regions that lump up into, uh, into that region, but um, it's just kind of nice to have events in our, in our own, uh, time zones and, and kind of our own servers. So really fun and hopefully they can, uh, continue with it.
Uh, Pink Poop, did you watch Arc's games attentively and cheered him on and?
Um, I don't think I watched the first one, but I definitely watched the second one and was a little heartbroken, but it's okay. He, uh, he can come back in Dust League in a couple of weeks, but I definitely enjoyed, um, ZEE League. I think I like leagues that are, are tournaments that are a little bit more community based, so um, familiar faces and kind of makes the, uh, matchups a little bit more interesting to watch.
Yeah. Uh, Lado, were you surprised by the results at all or?
Um, no, I don't think there were a ton of upsets. I actually think one upset is, uh, Arc over Moonglade. Nice job beating Moonglade, Arc. That's a pretty big win. I, I, I don't think it's a major upset, um, but it's.
Is that the 2-1?
That's the 2-1. Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, the Elf mirror. Uh, but that, that's a good one for, for Arc. I'm, I'm kind of looking through here. I did watch the finals of this. I watched Insub first Hunter. That, that series was really good. It, it honestly could have gone either way. The games were really, uh, they were fun to watch. They were back and forth. Like it kind of felt like at any given time, either player could win any of those five games. And the fact that it went five games, that made it really exciting. So, uh, and it was a fun conclusion to the, to the tournament. Um, yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's a, it's a fun lineup. All these guys, we all know each other, so it's kind of fun to see everyone playing against each other and see how people do. I think Kiwi, like, uh, Kiwi going out, I, I guess Hunter is a favorite against Kiwi, but you never know. Kiwi Kaki is kind of like an X factor in the NA scene. He's, he's always an X factor. I feel like he could have just as easily taken out Hunter, but seemed Hunter was playing pretty strong that day.
I feel like Hunter is an X factor as well. He's not, I mean, he's been a little bit more consistent lately, but.
Yeah.
Hunter's very good against Kiwi Kaki's style, like extremely good versus that style.
Um, Hunter is also living in New York now, so he's not playing on that terrible South American ping. So instead of playing with like 250 ping, now he's playing with like 70 ping, which is significant.
I guess in terms of, uh, of races, kind of liked humans in there. If you think of any humans though, I guess Cruncher is the best one. Do you guys think that it was good that Cruncher and Hitman weren't in this? So it's cuz it gave an opportunity for the other players to shine?
It made a little bit more spicier.
Yeah.
I think, I think, um, it, it's kind of like I, I get the, it is kind of the same concept with like Back to Warcraft Saturday tournament where they restrict the ELO. Um, but for our region, it is kind of a, um, somewhat of a, a bummer because there's not exactly like a whole lot of events that people can play in. So restricting one of the two ongoing, I guess, active events that we have does kind of suck for them. Um, but I guess the idea that ZEE is trying to do, um, I, I, I can understand it. Um, the problem with, I guess, the human aspect is that there really isn't a whole lot of human players in general. I'd say at like the top ranks in our region that, um, there's just like after Cruncher, there's just like Acid Rain would be the person I, I guess I think of next, Sonki, um, both of which are inactive. Or at least I haven't, I haven't seen. Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, Sonki, so GTR just said that Sonki was gonna play, but he had his mom's birthday, I guess, over that weekend.
Well, I always knew he was a mama's boy, but no, it's.
Um, but after them, I guess, and they're, they're both relatively inactive, it seems like. Um, after them, you really don't run into too many humans. Like when I play W3C on NA, like I almost never run into human players, which is kind of unfortunate cuz that's like my favorite matchup, but it's like you just never really play against humans.
Yeah.
What is wrong with you? It's your favorite.
I think it's like the most interesting matchup as elf.
Yeah, there's, there's like a major skill drop off. After, after Cruncher and Hitman, there's just a major skill drop off to the next player who's probably like, as we see, like Insub and Hunter and Kiwi Kaki. So if Cruncher and Hitman worked playing this tournament, it's like 95% certain that those two would end up in the finals and one of the two would win.
It would be Dust League.
Yeah, like Dust League, so yeah.
I gotta say, it's a little bit weird that, you know, in StarCraft, if you say NA, it's just like USA and Canada. But in Warcraft 3, if you say NA, you include Oceania as well with it. I guess that's because that's the server that they play on, but it's still something that like, I'm like getting adjusted to. But in StarCraft, you would never, like if you say NA, that's never gonna be for, you're never gonna include Oceania cuz like they're actual, they are their own region that also gets like invite spots and stuff to tournaments too.
I would say if, if like New Zealand, Australia had a, their own server, then it wouldn't. But the fact that they don't have a server, then they get grouped in with us cuz we play against them. So.
Yeah. Alright. Uh, I think that's it actually for the tournaments that had listed on there. So perhaps we can move on. Let's see. It is W3 Champions. Jaywuk, do you know about W3 Champions?
Yeah, I know custom leather for Europe and USA, but in Korea, we can't, uh, there is not many people playing out top three champions. We usually play in the Netties.
Yeah, uh, honestly, this, I feel this has kind of saved the scene quite a bit outside of Asia because it gave us like, we, we got to play with like really good ping and with matchmaking, proper matchmaking against really good opponents. And they keep on improving it as well. Like you can see what matches are going on at all times. Like who's playing against who. Uh, they added FFA recently. And there's been quite a few games going on with FFA, which actually has lowered the amount of games that were played in solo as well. So maybe we can talk about this, but even just looking at the ranking, there is like so many familiar faces. You can now see who's streaming right now, who's in a game against who. Like who they've played against. Let's take the Muslim for example. Been playing a lot of FFA, but for example, yeah, tonight he played against, uh, Hawk twice. And then you can see like all the stats from that as well. So I really, really, I'm in love with like this website and there is like overall statistics as well of like the activity on the, on the server, the win rates of races depending on, uh, on MMR and stuff. So you can see which race is doing well at what level. Um, yeah, you guys have any thoughts on W3 Champions? Uh, Lado, let's go with you.
Uh, I mean, this is, this is everything we wanted from Blizzard six months ago. And it's, it's really disappointing that you know, I, I don't want to put a negative spin on this because it is really nice and the ladder works well. The website, website is awesome. Like the, the way you're able to like access it and see the matches that are going on and who's playing and who's streaming and there's just a lot of information that's very easily accessible. It's super well done. It's really clean. Like Pat has done, just done an awesome job. But every time I look at this, I get so mad at Blizzard just thinking about how good Reforged could have been if they just did this, like six months ago. Like instead of the player base dwindling right now, which is basically what we're seeing, we would, we would have sent, we would have seen like a massive spike in players and then maybe there may have been an increase in players. Like if, if the Reforged launch, if the Reforged launch was actually well received by the community, but instead Blizzard shit the bed and, uh, now we're just, we're playing with this. But it, I mean, it is fun to play. The ladder works great and the website works great. And I mean, props to Pat because it's way better than anything that Blizzard has done.
Arc?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it is definitely way better than what, uh, Blizzard has done with Reforged for sure. Um, the, kind of the negative side that we're seeing on NA is that just there's not really very many players playing, it seems like. Um, it really never took off as much as it did on Europe. Um, which for me, it's not that big of a deal because my ping to Europe is not so bad. Um, except it's, it's a, it's a bad deal for the European players that, um, are in like Russia, I guess, for some reason. Whenever I play against a Russian player, I'm almost always the host. So like they always have really high ping whenever I, I try and play on Europe.
Did you tell them? Look at me. I'm the captain.
Um, and so I, so I actually, it, it kind of makes me a little defeated to actually play on Europe too because like half the time I just get flamed for, uh, being in, uh, um, or having, having the host for it. So hopefully they're able to come up with a, a fix for that. And then, then, uh, I think like what you have showing up here on the screen, like that's, that's a big thing. Like I think ever since they, I don't know if it's related or not, but like when they made that change to the launcher.
Yeah.
Um, like it was easy enough for me to set it up, but, uh, I'm sure quite a few players that maybe aren't as like they don't care whether they search regular ladder or this W3C ladder. Um, as long as they're playing, that it probably impacted them and maybe they don't even realize that. Uh, there is a launcher now that they just think the, the client just doesn't work anymore or something.
Yeah.
So I mean, there definitely does seem like there's a lot less players now. Cuz like before I, I would search on Europe, but I would never have, um, I would never have to wait very long at all for a game, even though I'm searching like in the later parts of the, uh, parts of the night. But now like I'll, I'll go on Europe. I can't find a game and I'll switch over to NA, can't find a game. And I was like, okay, I guess I either just don't play or I play Netties. So that's the only downside with it.
Yeah, it seems like there's been a big dip in like the player that I've been playing. And not just here, but also like in some of the tournaments, like the Open Cup, I had like the lowest participants ever, I think the last one. But, uh, yeah, this is a problem for sure. Like, and like some people have theorized on like why this might be as well. You know, maybe because FFA was introduced, more players were searching FFA. Uh, the, it could be the launcher. You know, a lot of people, they can be bothered with it. They just start Warcraft 3 normally like they used to. They searched W3 Champion. It doesn't work and then they're like, oh, it doesn't work. So I'll just go ladder normally. But yeah, like ideally, there's gonna be some fixes being implemented so that we can preserve like a, you know, decently healthy player base. I really liked like, you know, one or two months ago when there was like a lot of players being active all the time. There was almost no search time, but you're still meeting somebody close to your skill all the time and stuff. Like Lado, have you had time to play and experience that at all or?
I haven't played a ton of games. Like I'm looking at my profile right now and I, I don't know. I have like 30 games played, so. But my, I mean, my experience has been good. My issue with Europe, and I don't know what's going on. And we, we kind of experienced this when we were playing 2v2. You've heard me complaining, but with Europe, it's like 50% of the time I get a server that's acceptable where I have like 150 ping, which I'm okay playing with. And then 50% of the time I have like 300 ping with spikes. And I, I've no idea why and it's, it's like not fun to play on at all. So yeah, like I, I wanna play on Europe just because, like I said, I don't mind playing with 150 ping and there's more players and better players on Europe, but um, yeah, the server, server thing is an issue. Um, otherwise, I mean, the ladder, like at, at like the late night times in America, the NA ladder is actually pretty good. It's like from like 6:00 PM to midnight, uh, Eastern time. Usually the ladder is like pretty healthy. There's like a good number of players playing. You can find games quickly and generally they're, they're pretty solid players that are around your skill level. So, uh, I mean, o- overall, I'd say it's a good experience and yeah. I'd encourage, if anyone is listening and wants to. I'd encourage, if anyone is listening and wants to try it out, I encourage you to try it out. It's fun.
Anything that you'd like to see added next? Random team like USC servers?
I know, uh, yeah, host bot. They talked about host bots being able to like host from different locations that aren't Blizzard servers. I think that should be the next priority. I know pad, pad put up like a, there was a little bit of drama about this. I don't know if you talked about this on the past town hall, but pad put up a, like a survey to see what should be the next thing implemented. And basically a bunch of not a bunch, a couple of the people from the FFA community like rigged the survey and created like bots to spam votes for FFA. And that's why FFA actually ended up winning it. Um, but yeah, within that, within that survey.
Allegedly, yeah.
Yeah, I'm like, how is that?
There's screenshots showing that they did it. Is it? I don't think it's allegedly. Anyway, the, um, within those like six options that pad put out of things he thought could be implemented, one of them was host bots, which I think would be the next most important.
Ping Poop, you were gonna say something?
Crazy. I didn't know that. I didn't keep up with that drama. Um, no, but I think pad letters, um, really cool. I, I really enjoy what his team has done and the effort that they've put in. I think it's definitely put a Band-Aid over a wound that is called reforge. I don't think it addresses the issue of reforge itself. Um, one thing that I would like to see, I mean, I think we kind of talked about the server issues and things like that. That would help address like Australian ping and whatnot. I think what would be cool to look at it though, I'm more, I like data. I like analytics. And one thing that like Dota two has is your post-game analytics. I think that would be interesting to see kind of, um, your goal per minute or things like that, just to kind of understand where at what point in the game did you fuck up essentially?
Okay. Um, Arc, was there something that you'd like to see next added to W three champions?
Think host bots, uh, I would agree with Lotto is, is so important because basically an entire section of our community is pretty much like, like at minimum, they're playing with 200 ping and I'm basically talking about like the Southeast Asia oceanics region that and, and not to, hope I'm not jumping ahead on anything, but, um, like the WGL qualifiers that we have for the Western scene. It's, it's required to play on the European server, which is essentially unplayable for the Southeast Asia oceanic community. And there's a lot of good players in that region that especially if they had, uh, I guess a fair, a fair host, um, could certainly do really well against European players. But having them play at 400 plus ping at minimum is just unrealistic. And it's just really unfortunate that there's such a good, big community in that region that even when they play against themselves are going to be playing with 200 plus ping because the server is halfway across the world for them still for some reason. So I think host bots would be like one of the biggest improvements to the, um, overall community, in my opinion.
Does it cost to maintain? Like if, let's say we live in a world where pad can do that. Would it cost him to maintain those host bots?
Yeah, it costs a bit of money to have a server host for sure. I don't think it's super expensive, but it does cost money. Yeah. Um, I think, yeah, that does it for this topic. Sadly, Jay, we cannot weigh in too much because he doesn't get to play on this.
Yep.
Uh, let's see. Topic number five, let's talk about balance. So in this one, just take me through the three matchups of your race that you have to play that are not mirror. And how do you think they are and how balanced you think they are? And then give me your ranking of races from best to worst. Do you want to do this too, Ping Poop?
Um, I'll go, yeah, but I'll go first because it's going to be very short.
Okay.
Again, I'm new. I think the biggest thing I struggle with is against human. I don't know how to play um, against rifleman.
Do you want to experiment on what strategy you use?
I spam a strategy over and over and over, uh, keeper of the grove and hunts. And clearly that doesn't work against rifleman. And so I've tried to adapt against it and it just, it doesn't work very well.
And what about the other matchups?
Care about the other ones.
Do you want to give a ranking for races?
Uh, in terms of easiest or hardest to eat?
Strengths, like what's the best race, second best, third best and weakest?
Like, oh, the, I think the easiest for me to play against in terms of like what I think is weakest is undead. I feel very comfortable playing against undead. I don't know why, but I just.
You need to stop. Undead is not the weakest place in this game.
I don't know, that's just me, but I mean, I honestly, I think humans the hardest for me to play against.
Okay. Arc. You want to go next?
Sure. Um, I think I think undead has always been really strong overall versus, um, elf and human. Um, and like historically generally pretty weak versus orc, which I think has been one of the big drivers for why like everyone always consider, doesn't consider undead as one of the best races, but I mean, to me, I, I think undead is just really strong versus, versus elf. And that's for me is like my weakest matchup, um, outside of mirror. After that, I think, um, human. I think human is, it, it seems really bad, like as you're playing it, just because I think there's, there's so many things that you have to do that is, makes it not so clear why you lose as the elf player. And that's, I think what initially, like when I was trying to really learn the matchup more is what may, made me um, like I just didn't really know exactly why I was losing games. Um, so it took me a long time to really figure it out. Um, but like, I think once you get to a point where you can like, you, you know exactly what you need to do during the early parts of the game, like the pre T two parts of the game, it makes it so it's not as, um, difficult because you know, like where you need to position your units so that you can catch runbys or stuff like that. Um, but I guess in order of my ranking, I would say undead, human orc in terms of most difficult to least difficult. Um, but I think I think the, um, undead matchup is really the one that I think is hardest for elf personally. Uh, I think a lot of that has to do with really how, how many different things the undead can do, different openings and stuff like that.
Yeah. So your ranking is again, to summarize it?
Uh, undead, human orc, elf.
Of course. Lado?
Uh, I, I agree with a lot of what Arc said. I, one thing that, um, I wanted to add, I actually enjoy playing against undead. I think they're really strong against, oh, I think every race is strong against elf, but the, um, the, I enjoy playing against undead, but the one thing that that, you know, it wasn't this most recent, recent patch, but it was the last patch. It kind of opened up the undead fast expand against elf and against other races. We're seeing, we're basically just seeing undeads expand more frequently as a whole, not, not always necessarily at tier one, not like a fast expand, but we're just seeing more expansions come out and, uh, undeads as a whole are playing it better. And just that fact, like that they have that option to do that in my mind, makes them a stronger race. So yeah, undead is tough right now. Undead is, uh, like I said, I still enjoy playing it, but I, I actually enjoy playing against undead more than human. But, um, yeah, undead's ability to expand more easily. And especially with the new crypt lord buff, we're, I think we're going to even see more expansions as we saw, uh, in the side against Todd series. But yeah, so I would say, and then difficulty wise, in my mind, human is, is still the hardest. Human is like, I, I feel like I have to cheese the human in order to win. Like I it's, it's so hard in my mind to gain an advantage against a human player that just has to do. Ba- basically there's, there's like a rifle push or there's fast expand. Those are kind of the two strategies that you see and they're both super duper strong. And they seem very, very easy to execute. I think, I think fast expansion is a little bit harder to execute, especially for like a middle level player, but they're both kind of cut and dry strategies that have been done for 10 years and like, everything is in the books in terms of like timings and what units you get and how to do it and creep route. Like people know how to do it. It's like not hard. So in order to at least in my mind, in order to get an advantage against someone that has been doing the same thing, or is able to go back and look at what has been done for 10 years, it's, it's super difficult right now because you know, we used to use bears to counter it, but bears got minus four damage about a year ago. So yeah, plus one now. Well, it, so this is the thing, they, the nerf was minus four to the min and the max damage. The plus one was plus one to just minimum damage. So that means that's effectively, that's still only plus five, plus point five damage, which is like, I'm sorry, but that's insignificant. Anyway, so human is still in my mind, the hardest, um, orc, I think is the easiest matchup for elf. I, I think, uh, we you know, we see keeper mass tier, tier one is the go-to strategy. I've been doing that with some success and I've been doing like a lot of D H naga, um, hunters hauled, try a bear stuff with some success too. So I kind of enjoy playing against orc. I think night elf against orc is night elf's best matchup right now. Uh, and then mirrors mirror, but in terms of strength of races, I would say undead, undead number one. Um, human and orc, I feel like can go either way. And then of course night elf is the weakest.
We're the same.
Great minds think alike.
They sure do.
Uh, Jaywood?
Okay, maybe undead is, uh, good against, uh, human because even skeleton and opposite, I think you'd have a more advantage than humans. And versus night elf, uh, you can do, uh, under the can do backseat span and TK hardest style. Also all the goo style. So I think best matchup for undead is versus night elf. And the hardest is, uh, versus orc. If orc get a, uh, very good item on blade master is, uh, matches are gonna be horrible. That's all.
And how about if you play against falsier style?
Falsier style, if, uh, lean or podcast play during falsier is really hard, but the others is okay. Yeah.
And so what's the ranking of races from the, the best to worst? You think?
Best is, uh, human. Worst is the orc.
Human, then who?
Human than night elf and orc and undead.
Undead is the weakest?
Yeah.
You little shit. Do you talk a lot about balance with other players like, uh, Korean players or something or?
Usually, yeah, but
What did they say?
They think, uh, human is just too strong also.
Your brother too?
No.
Yeah. Wait, who said human was too, Moon say that?
Lorie, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, low light doesn't count. Obviously. So you think undead is the weakest?
Uh, uh, maybe balance is decided by who gonna play, uh, that lace, I think. Yeah.
But you said undead has good matchup with, uh, night elf and with, uh, human. So how can undead be the weakest then?
I don't know.
And specifically about, uh, about human versus undead, you said it's good for undead, like how good? What, what ratio would you give undeads?
You can harvest with a skeleton and kill the peasant when human expand. And even human go, uh, one base lipos, undead can, uh, use counter, counter strategies. Maybe that's all. Yeah.
Yeah. And against orc, um, you said if orc gets really good item, it's very hard, but if they don't get good item, you think that it's fine?
Still blade is strong because critically it's got low back.
Yeah.
But, uh, under the, added the bench and the custom blade is, uh, calculated to bite. So I think, uh, undead versus orc is maybe fifty, forty-five, uh, fifty, fifty, uh, fifty-five, but item is a little matter. Yeah.
Yeah. And do, do you think the map pool plays a big part of everything, all of this?
Hmm, map is all nowadays, maybe it's just a small because, uh, all the days maybe it's very big. So on that is, uh, really not good in the big maps and the huge, huge maps. But nowadays, uh, e- every map is, uh, one B one map. So it's a small, so it's making, uh, under the strong, I think.
Would you like to see some map rotation happening? Maybe like some old maps to go out, maybe like Echo Isle or whatever, and then adding some new maps?
Hmm, maybe Tutlak?
We have Tutel Rock in the map pool?
Yeah.
You freaking.
Or, or ancient eyes.
That's, that was not a good map.
Ancient houses are such a bad map.
Do, do you talk about balance very regularly with a lot of players or not so much?
Yeah.
And, um, just out of curiosity, like, so who, who is your main practice partner? Or do you have any? Or do you just mostly play ladder?
I mostly play ladder nowadays. Uh, sometime, uh, when Moon and Thunder want to practice or lean, I'm helping them. Yeah.
Okay. Alright, uh, I think we can maybe take some questions. And then that's gonna be it. So if you guys have some questions, fire away in the chats. I made a Reddit thread, but I don't, I can't see a single decent question. Actually, no, there is. River reforged asked, every week there seems to be less people participating in the back to Warcraft and ESL cups. Do you think this threatens the longevity and growth of these tournaments? If so, how would you encourage more people to participate and compete? Arc, why don't you take this one?
You wise man. I think, uh, um, one aspect for why a lot of, um, N A players don't play in it is one, it's relatively early. Um, back to Warcraft's a little bit, um, better because it's an hour later, but ELO or E, uh, ESL, um, is at like nine AM my time, which it's not terribly early, but I mean, there's just stuff in the morning that I usually do. And I'm sure a lot of other people as well, don't really want to get on and just play early in the morning. Um, it's kind of, it, it forces the European hosts was comes about, comes back again to like the host bot issue where some of the West Coast players, um, may not want to really play with the high ping. Um, but ultimately it might also just be that, um, maybe there, there, a lot of, a lot of people don't seem to want to play in, in weekly cups. Um, like when I, when I think back to like the really early parts of Warcraft three, where they had like Warcraft three masters or, um, icy cup, or I don't remember the other names, but um, like some of those weekly tournaments, like I remember playing them. I'd wake up and it was like seven 30 or something in the morning for me. But I'd wake up and play them just for the fact that I could play against like, like Utah or like Grubby or like, um, some of the other, uh, like pros back then. Whereas now like with everyone streaming and everything, uh, people might not have the interest in it because they can interact with, with the pros, um, while streaming rather than like crossing your fingers that you get to get play against a really good player, like in the early rounds. So that might be part of the reasoning. Um, and that usually that kind of wears off as time goes on, like as, as you, as more events happen, people get kind of complacent and just accept that, uh, this is what the status quo is and, and they can already get their interaction elsewhere. So that might be part of the reasoning. Um, but yeah, for me personally, it's just I have other stuff going on in the morning. Um, and so like people in, in our region probably, uh, don't play as much in general. So I guess that's, that's my thoughts on it.
Lado, you want to chime in?
Uh, yeah. So I, I think it's in my mind, it's like a numbers game, right? So a certain percentage of the people that play Warcraft will play in these weekly cups. I don't know what that percentage is. Let's, let's just say 10% of the people that are, you know, diamond and higher will play in these cups. So in my mind, you, you need to increase the actual player base in order to increase the amount of people that participate in these cups. Um, otherwise we're just gonna keep, see it keep dwindling and you know, that, that kind of has been the trend. Those cups used to get kind of like around a hundred. Those cups used to get kind of like around a hundred, and I think now it's down to like eighty-ish players. I could be wrong on that, but it's something like that.
I think we had almost two hundred at some point, and I think one of the recent ones are like fifty or sixty.
Yeah, that's pretty bad, but um I think it comes down to like just the player base as a whole is going down. And that comes down to the fact that Blizzard shit the bed. Again, like if, if Blizzard put out a good product and there was a larger player base, more players would be at that high level and more players would be willing to, you know, put their name on the line to, to go and play in these cups. But as a result, there's not, you know, there's not that many good players that wanna, you know, see how far they can get in these cups against the top players. So yeah, in unfortunately, I, I only see it either staying stagnant at fifty-ish players or maybe even going down. Which, which sucks. I don't wanna, I don't want that to happen, but that's kind of the, the trajectory that it's on right now.
Yeah, I think part of it, like we saw before, there was a lot of players and stuff, was kind of like the novelty of these cups, you had W three champions, you still had some hype around Warcraft III and the Reforg, obviously, like not all of it was good, but there were still a bunch of people enthusiastic about the game. And also COVID happened and people were kind of at home and like, with not much to do, so they played the tournaments, but now it's kind of a little bit more and more returning to normal. People have got to go back to work and they might not, not have as much time as well. Pink Poop, you, you have any thoughts on this?
Exactly what I'm thinking. I think COVID has something to play with it. And then I also agree with Arc in terms of hosting. I mean, you're, as a Western player, you're just feeling discouraged when you are not only playing against really good people, but you already had a disadvantage because of your ping and you can't do anything about it. And then the times are just not ideal.
Uh yeah, actually, I see in the chats, I think Saron asked and Sayso is talking about it now, is the ELO cap. Do you guys think it's important to have some tournaments with the yellow cap? Because on one hand, personally, I look at ESL Open Cup and I'm like it's a little bit boring, because you know, it's happy against Foggy every week in the finals and like nobody seems to be able to beat them. And then the top four seeds, Blade, Hawk, Happy and Foggy, they always make semifinals. Nobody ever can beat these guys. It's insane. So it's kind of demotivating, but at the time, I'm like, maybe we just need to get good, you know, like if you, to, to be the best, you gotta beat the best, right? Like if we can't beat them, like maybe we don't deserve to be in the semifinals and finals, so it's like really, really tricky. I, I can see also, I can also feel sometimes demotivated, knowing that these guys are gonna be playing, and I know it's gonna be stupidly hard to beat even just one of them, and you have to beat like two, maybe three to win the tournament.
I think the yellow cap is bad as a whole, but it's on a week by week basis, it can be good for viewership, just because it creates more diversity in the games. It's Say it again, sorry?
And it keeps things spicy.
Yeah. So it, it mixes it up, is especially for the observer. Uh but I think excluding people isn't good.
I guess what, what I would, i- if the goal is to have uh different, like uh I can't think of the word, but like variation in the uh people that make it towards the finals, I guess I would personally would prefer to see something like um after you, um let's say you win one tournament, you have to sit out like two tournaments or something like that. Rather than completely barring um certain players from it, just because um, I don't know, I, I feel like especially given that, I mean, EU has a lot more events going on, but even still, like there's only the ESL Cup, and then there's the Back to Warcraft Cup sometimes, um if they don't have like a, a different tournament going on. So it's still really only two events. There's, I mean i- it's kind of shitty to uh push out Happy from the tournament. Like fifty percent of the tournaments that he could play in, just becau- um just because of the cap. So I, I feel like just because our, our scene is so small. I'm not a big fan of the yellow cap for like such a major tournament. Uh like major for our, our scene, I guess, tournament. Um that's why I, I, I really would prefer to see something that doesn't necessarily exclude him, but maybe makes it, ha- or has some other way to uh input variation into the player base.
Um. Jew, Coratius asked me to ask you about uh your games to Remind in WGL Team League on Amazonia. Any chance you could share some thoughts on like, you know, what was your game plan? And then how did the game unfold in your minds as it was going and happening?
In the versus Remind, I uh I think here we play uh Amazonia, so I snipe him, so. And uh uh when I uh to create to Goulash, he acting very overloaded. So I trained it uh to creeps, to create goal. And the sati is, is not bad, uh making him TP and killed us around. But I did some mistake in the hmm in the mid-game, so game gonna be very long. And I think if I didn't choose Gargoyle or uh Gargoyle, then just choose pin, maybe game more easier for me, but I choose Gargoyle because uh I thought if he buy uh Jeflins, I will uh is gonna be hard. So I choose the Gargoyle and game gonna be very hard. Then I think I can, I can, might lose the game, because uh he doing, he doing well. I did some mistake, but it's a team match, so I can't give up uh easily. And I just find out, uh I just thinking, how can I win? How can I win? Then I doing it, then finally I got the kill his demo hunter in the base, then he GG, then I just shout and scream.
What did you shout?
Yeah!
Wait, A- Amazonia is also a pretty crazy map, because there is so much gold on the expo, so like almost anything's possible in terms of like building a big army and stuff. Um, okay, well, I think maybe we can do some shout outs and call it. Lado left us for a second, but um if you guys have any more questions, maybe we can take like one more or two or something. I was trying to scout a little bit through the chats. Yeah, people really enjoyed that game of uh you against Reminds. Do you think Amazonia favors you or?
No, no, no. Amazonia is, I think, Apple is better than UD.
So why did you snipe Remind then?
Because that is the best way to win the YR team, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wait, Michael, why did you change your name from Lucifer to Michael?
Because uh some uh I'm, I'm, I'm Christian, so.
Ah, got it.
Yeah. Little, some religion problem, so I just choose to change to the name to Mikail.
Did you speak about it at church and then it told me you should change or you just decided yourself?
Or the back of his jacket in church.
Uh I, in the church, when I go to first time church, then I said, uh, okay, I I want to change leg length into Buddha to a Christian. Then I said, I am pro gamer and my nickname, nickname is Lucifer. Then mine is, my, my minister, look at me, then what, what the fuck is this guy?
Hey, what about your race though? You play the undeads. I think you need to switch to human and make some priests.
No, undead is okay.
Alright guys, thank you so much for being on. Let's do some shout outs and I'll let you guys uh do whatever it is you're gonna do. I know Lado that's good. I could cook some dinner soon. He always brags about his cooking skills. Maybe one day we'll try him. Um yeah, let's do shout outs. Where can people, what do you want people to follow you, like stream, Twitter, whatever, Pink Poop? Go first.
Yeah, you can follow me at Team Dust on Twitter. Um and just to give a quick shout out, this weekend is the Dust League Season Five on Friday at eight PM Eastern. So sign up, it's over on Team Dust Twitter, and then we'll have another second qualifier the week af- or the day after on Saturday, and then the draft um the week after. So definitely follow uh Team Dust on Twitter.
It's just Team Dust, when, there's no underscore, nothing, just Team Dust?
Just team twitter dot coms forward slash Team Dust.
Alright.
We keep.
Arc?
Um so you can uh check out my Twitch channel, um Twitch TV slash Arc underscore RS. Um my Twitter is Arc underscore Warcraft, WC3, Arc underscore WC3. Um and I believe my YouTube channel is also Arc underscore WC3. Um I create a YouTube series called The Learning Night Elf YouTube Series. So if you're an aspiring player that wants to play the weakest race of night elf, check out The Learning Night Elf YouTube Series.
You're really selling this, aren't you?
I learned a few things from it.
But yeah, actually I have a lot of videos on there, so um if you're interested, please check that out. Um and then yeah, follow my Twitch channel as well. That's all I got. Oh, um I'll be playing in Dust League Season Five, which doesn't start for another two weeks, so uh definitely play the qualifiers if you are. It, it's restricted to NA, um NA, South America, or NASA, Oceanic and Southeast Asia. So if you're in one of those.
Basically, everybody except Asia and Europe.
Uh if you're in one of those regions, definitely sign up for the uh um uh qualifiers and play. Lotto?
I'm gonna play if I can. I like those. Those tournaments are a lot of fun. I'll, I'll play if I can. Alright, are you done, Arc?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Alright, um I, I twitch.tv slash Lotto's Lounge. I'll put it in the chat. Follow me. I used to stream more than I did more, I used to stream more than I do now, but uh as a result of this guy who's getting a little bit fussy, because he's hungry, but uh little Lincoln came into my world, so I don't play as much, but I still do try to play when I can, so uh when I do play, I usually have him on me like this, but it's a good time, so follow me on Twitch. And I guess I use, I use Twitter a little bit and you can see my handle on the screen. It's at Lotto Blanco. Other than that, shout out to the NA boys. NA tournaments are a lot of fun. Check out Dust League. Dust League is fun.
Jew?
Okay, uh this Sunday, we uh in uh this Sunday, we're gonna play versus uh Yellow. So we are very uh practice much for preparing that match, so in the Sunday, uh watching us then pray for us to win. Thank you.
And where do you want people to follow you? You still stream on Twitch, right?
Yeah, yeah, but it's okay. Yeah.
Well, you don't wanna advertise your Twitch?
Now I aiming, aiming for team match only, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright guys, uh it was a pleasure having you on. I will put all of the links where people can follow you under the video and uh people can give you a follow there. So yeah, thank you for joining. I wish you all a good night and I'll see you guys next time.
Thanks for having us. Have a good night.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
Alright, that was a fun time with these guys. Uh thank you to everybody who tuned in, who listened to this on a platform. We're available in a lot of places. Again, thanks to all the guests. If you guys are enjoying the show, consider supporting us on Patreon, which helps cover production costs like podcast hosting and continue providing this content. We're now live on Google Podcasts, iTunes, Stitcher, Spotify, Podbean, SoundCloud and many, many more. We actually fell a little bit back behind, because my content manager was traveling for a little bit and moving uh across the country. But we should be getting all caught up on all the content stuff very, very soon. And I've recorded a whole bunch of tutorials and my interview series is very, very close to being started as well. So lots of good contents coming your way. So yeah, there is the Patreon that you guys can check out and if you want to join it and help support this, there is a lot of perks, like priority queue and questions, Discord perks, monthly replay packs. Custom recorded voice messages, uh ability to cast votes for the future direction of my tutorial content, and you can submit replays for me to analyze live on stream. And much more, so check it out. And make sure to hop into my Discord and follow my Twitter for updates as well. Subscribe to my YouTube for showvods. Thanks for watching and or listening, everyone. See you next week.